Mike McCool here in the Royal Examiner studio and with me today is Vicki Cook. Vicki is the chairman of the Board of Supervisors here in Warren County.
Yep.
I guess we call them chairman, that's appropriate word.
Yeah, chairman, madam chairman.
Whatever. Just don't call you late for dinner.
That's right, that's right.
So Vicki's here, we're gonna just talk about little things that the board has been doing this year. We're halfway through the year, halfway, we're budget time, all sorts of stuff going on. So why don't you fill us in on some of the highlights?
Well, since I've, yeah, since I was elected as the chairman at the beginning of this year, you know, we've kind of started making some changes with the agenda. You know, a lot in the past, you know, where they would put, we would have a lot of actions, you know, on the consent agenda.
Right.
That never really got out for discussion for the people.
Sometimes it's longer than the agenda, yeah.
Right, you know, and so there was a lot of, you know, major acquisitions, some MOAs, you know, a lot of those type of things that I believe that should have been more put out for the public to know what we're talking about.
A little more transparency, so to speak.
Exactly, you know, and then, and also we've kind of restructured our working sessions where we have any motions or any actions that we would eventually be taking, you know, we'd have another working session and that would give an opportunity for the board members to deep dive, ask the questions, you know, that kind of thing. So when it did came to a regular meeting, then we didn't have to go through all of that and, you know.
Start over again and discuss the whole thing.
Exactly, you know, so we started to implement a little bit of that. Also, you know, we got through the tax.
Alright.
Tax assessment and on the Board of Supervisors, we were very committed to minimize the tax burden on our tax.
People really got upset about that appraisal. I kept telling them, well, it's not the tax. Yeah, but it's gonna be inflated as you go through and, but there was some concessions, I guess.
Oh, oh yeah, you know, and so, you know, but we got through it and I think we, it was pretty fair for, for the community, you know. So now we're, after the tax assessment, then we had to jump into the budget, right?
Yeah, it's always a bone of contention, isn't it?
Well, you know, I've been part of, well, I've been exposed to the budget process for about three years, right, you know, as a candidate. I sat in one of the budget hearings and watching the Board of Supervisors at that time, deep dive, you know, asking the questions. And then my first year was, kind of my freshman year, if you will, where I actually participated in that and, and we deep dived and had my opportunity to actually understand what the departments do, right? You know, what were their needs? How did they do their basis of estimate, you know, and that kind of thing, so.
Sometimes you look at it, I said, why didn't even know we had that department?
That's right, you know, so, so that was, you know, with my first year and then now, of course, this past year, what we just did, you know, it was more that, that I understood the challenges and the needs to, for these departments to provide services for our community.
True.
It was to balance it. How did, you know, with the new revenue structure that, because of the tax assessment and the needs and still provide a quality service. So, so we got through that, you know, and then, so now we're actually preparing for the next budget cycle.
I was gonna say, it almost starts, it actually starts before the other one's finished.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, because it's like a six-month process, you know, because you, you have to get the, you know, the departments reevaluate, look at, you know, their, on their budgets and then the budget hearings, you know, it goes on and on. But it's a long process.
Are you going to implement a zero-based budget process?
That would be very nice, but I think we're on our way to that, you know, because we have some departments that still need to offset their costs from the general ledger or from taxpayers, you know, like budget billing, inspection and zoning, which we did go through a couple, I think it was a month ago, where we did increase some of those fees for inspections and zoning that can offset the amount of money that we take from the general fund.
Right, right.
So I think we're inching our way towards that.
And people, you know, you wanna, you're sometimes, you know, the services being rendered need to be paid for by the people that are only being benefited. If it's the entire public, then you kind of do it one way, but when it only benefits a very small amount, then that's what we have user fees.
Exactly, and, yeah, so, so, you know, that, so we've been working on that and like I said, we're getting ready for the next cycle, you know, so that's good news. We're also working with Reach On Now.
Yeah, Reaching Out Now.
Reaching Out Now, thank you.
On the youth center.
On the youth center, so we, that's another thing that we're, we're working with, which, which people, it's reopening the youth center, but in a more modernized way, if you will. And to, you know, help the, our, I think it's gonna be the, more of the high school kids to come in.
The youths.
The youths, that's right. So, so we're working with them, I'm really excited because I think overall that's gonna benefit the total community, you know, because not only with these programs, it gives them a safe place to come and hang out, you know, after school or, you know, when their parents are not at home, but also, you know, the type of programs will help mentor, you know, some of the, some of the kids, it'd be better leaders, you know, and moving on.
Samantha Barber that runs that organization is really focused on youth and the things that they, you know, these leadership programs and she's done a good job on what she's done and she's been working real heavily over at Skyline High School and stuff. So, you know, she's committed to that and so it's, I see that she's really involved in that youth center thing, so should be a good, you get a good foundation of that thing getting started.
Absolutely, we're, the county is committed, so, so we got that going on and then we are in, almost done with the new senior center.
Right.
Where.
That's over at the, what I call the DSS building, but it's not 15th Street School.
Exactly.
We gotta come up with a new name.
I know.
We do have a name for it, it's called something, something complex, but no one can remember it.
Yeah, yeah, so we have taken, I think it was the cafeteria area, I'm not too sure.
Or the gymnasium or something, yeah.
Yeah, and so we've started renovating it, it's gonna give more room for our seniors because right now they're over in the, I forget, the park area.
Right.
But in fact, I think it was the last week.
Chimney Fields, I think is what it's, that's what it's called, yeah.
So we're real excited in getting that facility ready for them. It should hopefully be ready in another month or two months.
Right, right.
Don't quote me on that, but you know.
It's, it's well-used, I know that the, they got a little family that, and it really gives a little respect from a lot of caregivers too, for the seniors just to come to place to.
Oh yeah, and they have a good time. I mean, I'm, you know, I, I used to be really actively involved until they became chair. So I've been kind of, you know, not, because I was, was actually delivering meals once a week and so I would be able to see the interaction going on in the facility. And they, you know, they do crafts, they, you know, they sing, they have fire and rescue come in and they have little sessions, the sheriff comes in, you know, so it's a really, it's a.
Brings his guitar and they do a little picking and grinning.
That's right, yes, so, so it's, you know, so I'm really excited for that, for that, so they can have more room.
Sure.
Because they're very, you know, and now that COVID is over with, more seniors are coming out, you know. So they're very dear to my heart, so, so we're doing that.
Yeah, we're gonna be there sooner than later.
That's right, so, so that's been going on, you know, and we, we approved the acquisition for a new website, you know, our IT folks are looking into that, so they'll be working on that. We also approved a new budget system that's in implementation right now and hopefully by the end of the year will be completed. And what that budget system is gonna do is gonna be more transparent. It's gonna be able, you know, right now, our system is very, you know, what we call in the day, a legacy system, very.
Clunky, that's what we call it, clunky.
You know, it's ad hoc manual system, you know, so reporting capabilities aren't the greatest and that kind of thing, but, but this budget system that we're, that they're, that our financial director is looking into deploying is going to be more automated, if you will, right? And then a way I understand it's gonna have the interconnectivity to go into website.
Right.
So if anybody wants to say, hey, I wanna look at the sheriff's budget, I wanna look at, you know, fire and rescue budget or whatever, they can just go in there rather than picking up the phone and they'll be right there online, so that's, I'm looking forward to that.
Like, you know, we implemented that GIS system, you know, and that's really interesting, you can just click there and look at all your property and your neighbor's property and who owns that and, you know, kind of look around and see. It's, it's coming that way, I mean, it's a slow process, but now that we've, you know, it's on there, it's used quite a bit, so.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, and we're also in the process of doing market surveys for the AS400, I think it's what it's called, which is our financial system. And so there, we're looking at different products from different companies to modernize our financial system that will be integrating, you know, with the commission, treasurer, you know, so, so all these IT innovations, what it, what it does for the community is it helps with efficiency. You know, we don't have to use as many resources because we're not doing manual things, you know.
It's amazing, and governments are always the last ones because they're so massive. You know, it's like, you know, I could use QuickBooks, but that doesn't work well for the government, you know? It's just, you know, too much, too much information, so the idea these things do, they're always, because they're always written in the oldest languages and it's just a hard time to transition and to change from these legacy systems that are partially manual, partially, you know, dual, double entry, everything, you gotta do it twice.
Oh, yeah.
And so, but it does, it takes a while, but it'll eventually get.
Eventually.
Well, and the new systems are made to be upgraded as you go along compared to the old way. People are still using old DOS programs and Cobalt and Fortran and everything else in these old systems that are 20 and 30 years old.
That's true, that's true, you know, and, and, and they still serve their purpose.
Oh, it does, they work.
You know, but it's just, you know, the technology, I think back in the day it was like every 18 months, the technology changes, I don't know what it is now.
Every 18 minutes, it seems like to me.
Yes, so, so we're really, you know, so those things are going on and of course, the library is, is a big, a big thing right now. Of course, as everyone knows, is that during the budget process, a budget approval process, we did approve their budget, but we only appropriated the first quarter, you know, of it, you know, and, and, and I only can, you know, can speak for myself, I can't speak for the rest of the boards, you know. During the public hearings and the public comments period of all the citizens coming out and expressing their, you know, their concerns and they're, all of them were valid concerns, I believe that in the public comment period and public hearings, I do listen to everybody because everybody has a right to say that.
Sure.
Everybody has a right. So during that process, being another board member, went to talk to the library director and now the new president of the Board of Trustees. And we sat down and we kind of had our conversation about, you know, what we were hearing, you know, what, what can we do and that kind of thing. So we, we did talk about some improvements, you know, that short-term improvements of like relocating the books into another section, some, some of the books, and also revising their policy to add to, to report, uh, report cards, to library cards.
Right.
For the different age groups that gave parents choices, that they come in and they could say, yes, I want my child, or no, I don't, wants my child to see this material.
Some of these things that they're changing, they already actually had, this wasn't as easy or as a parent.
Yes.
You know, you had to go and request them, you know, wasn't on the form, you know, so, but they've been pretty adept, I mean, they've embraced the things that, and again, it just expedited the things that they had already were planning to do anyway, but, you know, they're stretched thin at the library as well.
They are.
But they've done it, I think it's coming along, the library is just such a great tool that we have in our community.
Absolutely.
Talk about any one service that gets used between the library and the Humane Society, I don't know.
Absolutely.
Yeah, both of those are used quite a bit, so it's important that we keep that thing going and people, like you say, come together in the middle and try to come, get some conversation going.
You know, and we don't wanna violate anybody's First Amendment right, you know, I mean, or any constitutional right, we, that's, that's the foundation of our county, our country. And, you know, at the, the Board of Trustee meeting, I mean, that's exactly what I said, that, you know, that I serve all the people and my guiding light is the Constitution.
And I think that's what the library tried to get across too, is basically, you know, we have to service our whole community and sometimes that means there's gonna be some people that'll be disappointed and there'll be a lot of, and there'll be some people be happy. So, you know, we're gonna try to, to represent them equally across the spectrum of our community.
Exactly, so.
So it's a fine, you're walking a tightrope, you know what I mean? If I do too much this way, too much that way, you know, so, yeah.
Yeah.
I wouldn't wanna be in their position.
No, so they, so they have implemented those things.
Right.
You know, I, I've been to the library, I saw where the location is, it's right in front of the counter. You can't miss it, it's there, you know, they, I was at the Board of Trustees when they approved the policy, so, you know, these are good positive steps going forward and we're still in discussion for other, other concerns that the folks have brought up during our hearings.
Sure, sure.
We're in the, we're in the process of having, coming up with a memo of agreement between the county and the town, we're, we're not there yet, but.
You just had your liaison meeting.
That's right.
Yeah, how'd that go?
The town and county liaison meeting, that was, you know, you know, we're.
Always interesting.
It's always, you know, we talked about the, the youth center, we talked about the, their tourism program and we touched a little bit about us and the aftex conservation. So, yeah, there was, you know, a lot of good, good discussion on things with that.
As long as we keep the dialogue going, you know.
Exactly.
It doesn't always work out or someone, you know, there's, it's hard to get 100% consensus, but if you just keep talking about it and keep working towards it, take the small wins as you go along.
Exactly.
And just chip away at it, it'll eventually get done.
And, you know, and sometimes, you know, we, things start out a certain course and then as we start talking and new things come to, in front of us, you know, it's okay, in my opinion, to kind of like, okay, well, let's, let's look at this, you know, shift, you know, it's kind of like, this is maybe a silly analogy, you know, back, you know, back in the day when I was working, I was a master scheduler and I would do schedules for major weapons systems, IT systems for the federal government. And I would always say, you know, scheduling 101, it always changes.
Right.
Okay, so, you know.
Something to change, you always see that little, little asterisk now at the bottom, something to change, yeah.
Yeah, so, so like you were saying, Mike, with the dialogue, people coming in with good ideas, you know, we rethink and, you know, because I think at the end of the day, all our, the citizens in our community all wanna do what's right for everybody.
Sure, sure, I was talking to someone the other day and they were talking about an event we were trying to put on and I said, well, have you considered this? You know, I've never thought about that and all of a sudden the whole dialogue changed to start considering, you know, again, as people start talking, we come up with different, people have different lenses that they look through and sometimes it's good, sometimes it's nah, not too good.
Yeah, well, you. But you don't ignore those ideas.
You know, I always say, throw it against the wall and see if it sticks, but sometimes you need a crazy idea to get everybody back on track to start thinking, to get the dialogue going again. So I always try to present the worst, craziest thing out there. We ain't gonna do that, okay, what are we gonna do? Well, let's try this, yeah. It looks like the Planning Commission has thrown a whammy to the, to the Board of Supervisors on the golf course property out there.
Yeah.
Yeah, they tied two to two and, and they said, well, we're just gonna send it over to the supervisors and let them, their wisdom figure it out.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's another hot topic we have in our community and again, that, that we're listening to all, both sides of the, of people's opinions and, and what's going on out there. It's, you know, I, I can't speak for the boards, you know, but, you know, for myself, when, you know, I, I look at the big picture.
Sure.
You know, and what will, what will it bring to the community?
Sure.
You know, and, and I know people may get, may not like my comment, but, you know, I, I look at our, our county budget as a portfolio, you know, and so when these new projects come in, you know, yeah, for economic development or what, what, what do you bring to offset?
The old pros and cons, you know.
Exactly, you know, and stuff like that, so, so I've been doing, you know, a lot of, you know, homework on that and.
Subject to change.
Subject to change, you know, subject to change, you never know, I mean.
As you get more information, you might, you may be one way this day, week and the next week you go the other way based upon the flow of information that comes out. So I think it's gonna be important, you're gonna get a lot of DEQ and VDOT.
A lot of the three-letter, three-letter agencies.
A bunch of letters, but, you know, those are gonna be governing the direction, I think, that the supervisors probably end up going, you know, you can, pros and cons on the basic development, but when you get down to it, it's gonna be about the infrastructure and that's really what it's gonna be about.
Health and safety.
Health and safety. Speaking of which, safety, I talked to VDOT last week and the lady told me that we are sending the bids out for the flyover on Rockland Road.
That's what I hear.
Yes.
That's what I hear.
And so she said that we should be sending those out this week, coming up, and that, and hopefully they go out to bid and be done and we should have some action by the end of the year, so that's pretty good.
That's, that's excellent, you know, I mean, because that was another major partnership for the county, I mean, especially.
And we didn't spend any county money on it.
No, we, we didn't, you know, so obviously, you know, there are people that had a higher pay grade that we are, realize that this is something that we, they need to address.
And I think that's something too, is you build something, it's the old, you build it, they'll come and that's gonna change the flavor of Rockland.
Yeah.
I think maybe, maybe not at the golf course, but somewhere else out there and it's, you build that road, it's gonna make it some changes in that area.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
It's gonna be something to be interested to look forward to.
Watch that.
The next, the next Board of Supervisors to come along. So what else is going on? It looks like you guys have been busy and it seems to be.
It's very, very busy, you know, we, there was a, an event over at the airport this weekend, supporting veterans, it was a private event and I, and I went out there that, that morning and kind of watched and we had veterans from all over the country.
Right.
Just to come out and skydive.
That's right.
You know, from.
We had the gentleman in last, a couple of weeks ago and we talked about that event going on and, and they put these things on and did all different things, skydiving and I think this was their third annual, if I recall what they were doing, but, yeah, it was an interesting.
It was fun to go out and watch it, there was a father and son.
You didn't go up and jump?
No, 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 no. No, I'll, no, they've been trying.
It's safe, Vicki, it's safe.
No, no.
But you know, and we've got that skydiving company that's out there now and they have been doing a bang-up job.
Yes, they have.
And they're nice people and I think that's really good for our economy, it's amazing that, you know, that's part of our tourism in a way, they're bringing people in, they spend their money and they go home.
Yeah, well, for, for example, there was a father and son that was there yesterday, on Saturday, and one was from Alabama and the other one's from Ohio. And I asked them, so are you gonna camp? Because they had a little facility out there off of Stokes. And he said, oh no, we, we're coming in, we're staying at Hampton Inn and we came just for this and we're leaving tomorrow.
Yeah.
You know, so that's the tourism.
Sure.
You know, the model that, you know, we look at, you know, so that's really good.
Venture in, settle, or settle in, venture out, you know, whatever.
That's right.
Whatever it is, yes. So a lot of work's going on and again, these things have taken lots of time. We've talked about these things for 10 or 15 years and, and then we look back and we, and these things start happening, we don't realize it, like, we just kind of accept it and we don't realize that, you know, last year we didn't have that and 10 years ago we didn't have that and, and these little, small incremental things and all of a sudden you look, wow, look at this.
Yeah.
And I think that's something good.
And we gotta be smart about it.
Be smart, I think, the old thing, smart growth.
Smart growth, it's cause, yeah, yeah.
And there's a lot of things that, you know, we talked about, some other people have brought up about, you know, building houses, you know, something about, it sticks in my head, $27,000 cost to the county to build a house of, of support over the years and, you know, and homes don't really bring us any economic development, so to speak, you know, indirectly. But you can't get jobs unless you have a place for people to live.
Absolutely.
And you can't get a company to move in here unless you have a workforce, so it's kind of like you're juggling all these balls.
It's tied in together, you know, if I could use the term like ecosystem. It's all tied in together, you know, because, you know, with, for economic development, you know, people don't bring business out here because there's no housing.
No housing, no workforce, yeah.
There's no, nothing like that and then when the developments come in, you know, people are, you know, afraid of change and, but then they do contribute to the economy, you know, with taxes and hiring our local businesses to come and move along.
Restaurants, that's right, oh, yeah.
Restaurants and, you know, and so it, it all ties in together, it's just, it's just allowed to be smart how we do it, in my opinion, you know, so.
Slow and grow slow, they say.
That's sad.
Well, Vicki, anything else you wanna talk about before we?
Well, before we move on, well, we got another six months ahead of us, a lot of good stuff, so I'm looking forward to that, but there is one, there one thing I do want to bring to the table is that in, in the past couple of months, you know, there's been, you know, what I call scuttlebutt.
Social interactions, social activities, right?
So that, of me, excuse me, supporting the sheriff for reelection and I just wanna let, let the community know that that is true. And I, as a result, I have, you know, was one of the reasons why I resigned from the Warren County Republican Committee, because of being, if you're, if you're a member of the committee, you have to openly actively support their candidate and because I chose to support the sheriff for his reelection.
He's an independent.
He's an independent conservative that I, I decided to, to resign from the committee. Now, that doesn't mean that I'm not a conservative.
Sure.
Right, I mean, I still believe, you know, freedom of speech, freedom of choice, I believe life starts at conception to natural death, I believe in the Second Amendment, I believe in free and fair elections.
Sounds like a Republican.
I, yeah, huh. So, so I still, those are my, my principles.
Your core principles, yeah.
You know, and, and they're all still there, it's just that I wanted to be openly supporting the sheriff reelection, you know, so, so the question is, so why, right? Why are you doing that? And I, I, I look at the way the sheriff looks at his vision of the department, his strategic mission, his strategic mission, which what I take away from is protecting all of our citizens, you know, from crime, respecting individual constitutional rights of all the people and, you know, and also outreach with the community, getting the community involved and helping in preventing crime is one thing when you're, you're tackling crime, but you, what, what, how do we prevent it? How do we prevent drug and, you know, and that.
That's that community policing that they do.
Exactly.
And that's a movement going everywhere, the town's doing it as well.
Yeah.
And they're trying and the county's trying and, and I think this accreditation, that the two accreditations that the sheriff's office has received is a, it gives a pretty much a mark that says that they're heading in the right direction.
Oh, absolutely, and, and that, so when, and that goes back to his strategic vision, his mission, cause that, if you go and look at his annual reports, you'll see, this is what I wanna do. So he, he had, he's committed to those objectives and by being accredited and by being certified as a police community county, that shows results and that, that, his commitment to it. So, so that's why, you know, reason why I'm supporting the sheriff, I wanted to get that.
Keep moving in that direction.
Yeah, you know, it's, it's a foundation, right? It's building the foundation, so, you know, we need to build on it, just, no, just, no different that I have told our financial director, you know, that, for, when, well, the, the prior one and.
That's another subject we could talk about, you've gone through so many financial directors.
But, but, you know, we got, yeah, we lost, we lost the former one, but he, he laid this foundation, you know, of budgets and finance, you know, putting out budget forms to fill out for the people and that kind of thing, and now our current financial director has taken that foundation and, and still building on, you know, so I look at this as all as a foundation and, and, you know, and the last thing I wanna, I wanna say is that, you know, my heart goes out to all public safety people, you know, fire and rescue and the sheriff, the deputies. I, I was a fireman for a day, you know, and.
About all you could stand, wasn't it?
No, well, you know, and that really, you know, it showed that the, the commitment, the professionalism, professionalism, the compassion that these folks have and that comes from leadership.
Sure.
You know, and, and also going to the sheriffs, the deputies, I, you know, I've gone to the library where they read books to the children, you know, I've gone to seniors.
Old days, that would have never happened.
Oh, no, you know, so I, I, I see this firsthand and I think we as a county should be very happy that we have the type of leadership we have for our public safety.
Well, I can remember the sheriff said something and I think it's so true, you know, we don't hire people or elect people because, you know, bad things won't happen. It's that, you know, what hap, what do we do when it does happen and how can we prevent it from happening again?
Yep.
So, cause, you know, bad things do happen and that's just what it is.
Yeah, yeah, that's life.
We don't want it, yeah, life gets in the way sometimes then.
But, so anyways, I just wanted to put that out on the table, you know, to, so everyone know my position and.
That's good.
But, you know, it's a free country, it's, you know, we all can support whoever we want But, you know, it's a free country, it's, you know, we all can support whoever we want and I respect everyone's decision.
I think the important thing is that people need to participate in our election. And uh you still have time to register and the election is November seventh, so, but people, you know, a lot of times I'm getting in a conversation with someone. When you get down to the, I said, well, who did you vote? Well, I don't, I don't vote. Well, then.
Oh, I know, when I hear that, I go ah.
Yeah, and I think, you know, I hate to say, well, you know, your opinion doesn't count much if you if you don't vote, you know, and. So people need to participate in our elections.
Yeah, well.
And every vote counts, I mean, every vote helps.
Absolutely, absolutely, so so that's, you know, just wanted, in a nutshell, you know, um I I know I, you always ask me to come and I always say. After this, after this, you know, it's so.
Well, I think people should come and, you know, I know people are gonna say, oh, you didn't ask her this question, you didn't ask her that question, but.
Oh, they can call me.
That's one thing, she is very open, just give her a call.
Just give me a call.
Shoot you an email.
Yeah, it may not be immediate, you know, but, you know, I do get back to everybody, yeah.
Appreciate it, Vicki, thanks so much for coming in and uh hope you uh, you know, keep your hair as you go forward. You know, pulling it out with all the. I tell you, and I told Walt, he was in the other day, Walt Mabe, and I told him, I said, people don't really realize the amount of work. Uh running for council or for supervisors and these sheriff and all these positions takes a lot of work. And of course, you get all that big money for being a supervisor. Yeah, yeah, so. Walt says gas money. And be surprised that you spend that much in gas running around the county, so.
Yeah, and and you're true, and you know, and and then the last point, if I will, if I may, is is that, um, you know, you you hear. People have said to me, you know, this is a thankless job and and it's not a thankless job. There's challenges, you know, there's challenges to go in there and get your, you know, get your hands dirty and and try to make things better for everybody. You know, and um and so I look at it as a challenge and and working with everybody to try and um. Make our county a better place to live, and when you kick back and you see the results, then it it's it's rewarding. So, you know, I wish more people would, you know, stand up and, you know, and 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 serve. It it's it's very, it's very rewarding.
Well, again, Vicki, thank you so much and we'll see you soon.
Yep, I promise.